Good evening, call to order the September 26th regular meeting of the Mason County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. If, Marilyn, if you please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if the clerk would please take the roll.
Commissioner, District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner, District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner, District Three, Terry Drexler.
Here.
Very good, thank you. Item number four, point one, if the clerk would please report the correspondence.
Ed Huber sent an application for the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent a Marijuana Cooperative Registration Application for 650 East Jensen Road in Shelton. Carlene Zimmerman and Ernesto Ullanos and Christine Forzal sent a letter requesting a traffic study be done on East North Bay Road to lower the speed limit. Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent a Corrected License and Application for the Ruckus Group at 133 Northeast Water Hill Road into Huya. They also sent a liquor license application for El Campesino Number Two in Belfair. And the State of Washington Department of Ecology sent a letter regarding the final ecology approval of the Mason County Shoreline Master Program Comprehensive Update.
Very good, thank you. Excuse me, item number four, point two, we have a proclamation commemorating Community Planning Month. I have a little statement here to read from our long-range planner, planning manager, and then I will read through the proclamation as well. "In observance of National Community Planning Month, October 2017, established to underscore the importance of planning and the impact that the built environment can have on both our community and public health, Mason County Board of County Commissioners is honoring our citizen planners for their countless hours of service to improve the county and the communities within. Mason County's Planning Commission, the Mason County Transportation Advisory Group, or TIPCAP, and the county's Historic Preservation Commission members have been instrumental in creating a vision for both the rural areas and the communities of Allen, Belfair, and Shelton. They have recently been involved in an update, the Mason County Comprehensive Plan, the 20-year plan for the county that will guide future development as well as Mason County's Critical Area Ordinance and Shoreline Master Program that helped protect the more than 700 miles of coastline, natural, cultural, and historic resources throughout the county. Please join the Mason County Board of County Commissioners, Planning Commission, and staff for a public meeting being held September 27, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. to learn more about the county's 20-year comprehensive plan, make your comments on the draft plan, and take part in Community Planning Month." And at this time, I will read the proclamation. Proclamation for Community Planning Month. Whereas, change is constant and affects Mason County and all communities within it, and whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us, Mason County Board of County Commissioners, the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning Commission and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of our county and the communities within it, and whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by both citizen and professional planners and extend our heartfelt thanks for their continued commitment to public service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the month of October 2017 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in Mason County in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month dated this 26th day of September 2017." And at this point, I would invite comment from the commission in recognition of the members of our community that come forward and plan for our future commissioners.
Well, first of all, thank you to our Planning Advisory Commission. It's hard work, it's thankless work. I often say that there's nothing more personal than land use planning. When you have a proposal coming next door to you, people take it pretty personal, and so it's pretty tough to divide the letter of the law, the intent of the plan, the intent of the development regulations, from the sentiments of people that will be affected or may be affected. You do great work. We're all, as we've told you many times, we're all alumni from the Planning Advisory Commission, and Washington State is one of the few states that have required planning through the Growth Management Act. And so, you know, what used to be a very good practice for cities mostly is now a required element in county and city government, and that makes your role so vital. And we just thank you so much for what you do. I think, we don't have our planner, but we do have the representative from our Community Development Department. Thank you, and please thank your staff for the work they do. It's a tough job, it's a tough job, and we get the privilege of being able to review all the hard work that you've already been through at a higher level, and I just, it's not lost on us how much work goes on behind the scenes, so thank you.
First, on the volunteer level. Currently, we have the chair of the Planning Commission sitting in this room. I am an alumni, as was explained, we all were, I was also the chair for several years. It's a tough, tough job. We have other members back here also of the Planning Commission, and what people do not realize is they are a group unto themselves. They are not the commission, as in the county commission. They have their own opinions, they have their own ideas, and they have their own things that they have to fight for when they're in that room to make sure that they think that the citizens are getting their fair share of how something is proposed or defended. They can come up with something that is completely opposite of what I may want or what other commissioners want, and you know what? That means they did their job sometimes because that means they stood against what the push was. Now, we have the choice of approving it or not, but it's always their job to do what they think is best when they're in there, and putting aside their personal feelings and sticking with the law. It's a hard thing to do, but they do it, and they ought to be proud of all the work that they've done to keep up on that. We all know the hearings, the Shoreline Master Plan, now is a lot more work on the Comprehensive Plan. It's very thankless, but you get, we make up for that by just giving you 10 times more work. We're very much appreciative of everything that you do, appreciative that you've stepped up to make these things happen, and appreciate that you sometimes will take the beatings in order to get where we need to go and give us the best recommendation you can on behalf of the citizens and the law as you see it and study it. As for our staff, we're in a better place now than I could ever possibly have imagined. I'm seeing changes in things that are coming very quickly, even though it seems like it's slow at its snail's pace until all of a sudden it's not. The idea that we now have Belfair open for business again is by no small feat work of our planning and our staff that works and does all these things. We owe you all a great debt of gratitude, especially for what's about to happen. I personally know of a lot of things that are occurring up in North Mason. I know that they could not have been occurring without all the work that you guys have been doing, so thank you. Thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, and I would echo the sentiments of Commissioners Drexler and Netherland as well, and I think having been on the Planning Commission gives you a different perspective on how things and decisions are made and the process that goes into it. It is a group that I always found to try and strike a balance, to always try and get the best result for our community possible, and, you know, the process there is a lot of conversation, a lot of deliberation, a lot of compromise at times, and, you know, and I think having that opportunity to go through that process brings forward better policy. You know, certainly, there's a, you know, a theory that, you know, a commission can unilaterally implement policy or code, and, but we get better policy and we get better results when it's going through a process that's citizen-led and driven by those concerns that come from the variety, from the various corners of Mason County. And so, very grateful for all of your work, and for the members on TIPCAP and the Historic Preservation Commission as well, they do fantastic work, and of course, to our staff, both from Public Works and Community Development that help guide your efforts and help facilitate those important community conversations. We're very lucky to have good, committed staff to help energetic and committed citizens do that work, so thank you very much, and I'm very, very grateful for your service to Mason County.
If I could say just a word on behalf of all of the citizen planners, we appreciate the recognition, and it's not thankless. Not at all.
Good.
Glad you feel that way.
Thank you. Move on to item number five this evening, which is our Open Forum for Citizen Inputs, an opportunity for members of the public to come forward and address the commission on items that are not on this evening's agenda. If you'd like to come forward and do so, now's the time. Please come to the podium and state your name, and the chair will recognize you.
James Thomas, Allen, Washington. I am here tonight as chairman of the Economic Development Council, and I thought that I would actually, Commissioner Schutie asked me to spend a few moments tonight talking about some of the changes going on at the EDC. As most of you probably know, Executive Director Lynn Longen resigned earlier this month, and we are engaged in a process to find a replacement for her. As we do that, we're going to take this opportunity to reevaluate the way we approach our mission. Historically, the EDC has been a very process-driven organization. We have taken a very broad view of what economic development means. But in fact, under the RCW, we have some very specific directions. We, as the Associate Development Organization, act as a bridge between the Department of Commerce and the county commission. We serve two masters that way. The Department of Commerce requires of us the collection and curation and communication of reams of data about the economic situation here in the county. The commission is much more interested in, well, they're interested in the data, of course, but more to the point, they're interested in us recruiting and retaining businesses in Mason County. In years gone by, we've gotten involved in lots of sort of ancillary activities that broadly construed our economic development, but they're not really measurable. It's very difficult to quantify the outcomes. You know, when your mission is so broadly defined, almost anything that you do, you can count as a success. So we're going to try and focus a little bit more on the mandates that we have from Commerce and from the commission. I guess the other, the other big thing that I want to say is we have a fabulous staff at the EDC. It's a small staff. We have Jennifer Beria, who has been with the EDC for 12 years. She has exceptional depth of understanding of the governmental programs and communications. She's done a wonderful job. I have tasked her to approach her function now more as a professional than as an underling. Instead of giving her direction as, you know, this week you need to do this, we have sat down and talked about what the objectives are, what the deliverables need to be, and how we're going to measure her progress, and she's going to have to deliver on those things, and I have every confidence that she's going to do a great job with that. Karen Leaf, Corinne Leaf, has been with us only for a couple of years, and some of you I know know Corinne. She is ubiquitous in the community and is a great asset for outreach to businesses and the community in general. So instead of having her manning the office from eight to five every day on the off-chance that somebody's going to drop by for a cup of coffee, I have tasked her to go out into the community, and that is already paying benefits. So, I don't know that this will be the ultimate organization of the EDC going forward, but we're going to give it a try and see if we can't make that work. Which brings me to the final leg of this, and I'm sure you are all going to be happy to hear me sit down soon. As we look to replace Lynn, we have to think about the commission's mandate to us to recruit new businesses and retain businesses, and I'm going to tell you that the skill set required for that looks very much like the skill set of a professional salesperson. And that's not necessarily the same skill set that one needs to manage an organization. So, the board is going to spend some time thinking about how we are going to make all of these parts fit together and make sure that when we recruit someone to replace Lynn, it's going to be someone who fits the needs of the mandates that we have to fill. The last thing, the very last thing, is that historically, EDC has been seen as very Shelton-centric, and I want you to know that some of that just isn't true. You know, we really have worked for many years throughout the county. But now the county has its own economic development organization, and in fact, I met with Ryan and with Andy today. We are very happy to work together. They don't need us to lead the parade for economic development in the city, they have their own people to do that. We are going to give them every assistance that we can, and they have promised the same assistance to us in the rest of the county. You know, we're all trying to generate leads on businesses that they want to locate here, and some of those are going to fit well into the city, and some of those are going to fit better in other parts of the county, in Belfair, maybe in Hoodspore. My point is, you'll be seeing a lot more of us in a lot more places than just downtown Shelton. To wrap this up, we have many wonderful stakeholders that help EDC. We have the PUDs, we have Mason General Hospital, we of course have the county and the Department of Commerce, and innumerable private businesses and individuals. We are all working together to make a great county, even a better county. And if your business isn't a member of EDC, and if you're not a member of EDC, I encourage you to join. Join with us, and let's work together, do what we can.
Thank you, James.
Any other members of the public for comment at this time?
Thank you, Commissioners. Tom Davis, resident of District Two, and I actually wasn't going to speak, but I think it's appropriate to watch the economic development of Mason County for a number of years, or the lack thereof, and I've been highly critical of, I believe, of some of the lackluster attempts to recruit and bring outside business into this county. It's a very, very difficult job to have, to suggest that somebody uproot and then relocate so expensive a process into your community without giving half your community away in terms of tax benefits and other incentives. I applaud the EDC taking a new direction that they describe as objective-driven, because objective-driven is the only way you're ever going to get to your objective, and narrowing the focus such. It has been, I think, a broad development report generating entity that has not produced the results that I think it is capable of, and I actually joined one year and I got tired of lunch, so that was it. It was a lot of socializing and a lot of plowing of the same ground. There is only one way to grow, and that's to go outside yourself. I think at this point, with 160 years under this county's belt, the companies that were going to grow and reach their potential have either done so or will do so without any encumbrances, but we must reach out to other opportunities and trade shows. I wouldn't go so far as China myself, but I would suggest that there are multitudes of opportunities to attend trade shows, and it is a salesman's job. It is always a salesman's job to close the deal. A lot of times, there's a lot of rhetoric, there's a lot of talk, there's a lot of backslapping. If you don't close the deal, it's all for naught. So I do, I think just the fact that the EDC and its director and its board have discussed shifting their focus is a step in the right direction, and I wish them the best, and let's give them a chance and see what happens.
Thank you.
I'm going to add, if I can, on the EDC, things have changed there, not just through this action, but in others as well. I remember many years ago, when I first got on there, we had an exercise of putting stickers, you know, number one for what you thought was the top priority and stuff, and one year recruitment, I only had, there was only one sticker as that for the number one, and that was mine. And I know then a few years ago, there was two, and I was going to say, and I believe that was the current chair. Now that those stickers got loaded up a lot different in the last time we had this, and it has become the number one purpose of the EDC, but you can imagine, that wasn't that long ago, where there was just one, then two, and now it's the main purpose. I'm very happy with the direction.
Thank you. Any additional comment from the public? Okay, with that, we can move on to item number six. It would entertain a motion with one possible amendment to the agenda in moving item 10.3, making item 10.3 item 10.1. Just bumping that up to the first.
Okay. And which one would be three? And then go on.
So, three would be one, one would be two, two would be...
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of the agenda as presented with an exception, to move 10.3 up to 10.1, then 10.1 will become 10.2, and 10.2 will become 10.3.
I'll second.
It moved and seconded to amend tonight's, adopt an amended agenda for tonight with item 10.3 becoming 10.1, 10.1 becoming 10.2, and 10.2 becoming 10.3. Any additional discussion? Hearing no, a call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to item seven, approval of minutes. There are minutes from September 5th and September 12th, regular meetings.
Chair, move the approval of those minutes.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from September 5th and September 12th, 2017, is a regular meeting. Any additional discussion? Hearing no, a call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Takes us to our action agenda. At this time, we will read through the items on tonight's agenda, and at that time, a commissioner or a member of the public can ask to have an item removed for a separate vote and/or discussion. I will take items 8.1 through 8.5. Commissioner Drexler, if you would take 8.6 through eight, and Commissioner Netherland, if you would please take 8.9 through 8.13. Item 8.1, approval of inter-agency agreement IAA 18091 between the State of Washington Administrative Office of the Courts and Mason County Juvenile Court Services for court-appointed special advocate CASA programs in the amount of $62,746. Item 8.2, approval of inter-agency agreement IAA 18128 between the State of Washington Administrative Office of the Courts and Mason County Juvenile Court Services for BECA bill programs and services in the amount of $73,179. Item 8.3, approval of the contract for professional services between Mason County and Strengthening Foundations Counseling, LLC, to continue functional family therapy, FFT services with probation youth and families. Item 8.4, approval of the revised inter-local agreement number 17-013, WSP contract number K13118, with Washington State Patrol authorizing services provided by the Public Works Department for vehicle, road, or site maintenance, engineering survey, GIS, emergency assistance, sign fabrication, fueling, and materials supply. And item 8.5, approval to have the board execute the resolution for county road projects, CRP 2012 and 2013, Mason County overlay projects on Johns Prairie Road and Mason Lake Road, and authorize the chair to sign all pertinent documents for Public Works to advertise set bid opening date and time, award contracts, and any change orders. Contract awards will be announced during a regular meeting of the board.
Item 8.6, approval to set a public hearing on Tuesday, October 17, 2017, at 9:30 a.m. to consider the following supplemental and budget transfer requests to the 2017 budget. Supplemental requests, $400,000 to non-departmental for 911 enhanced communication tax, $169,630 to Public Health for Department of Health Consolidated Housing Grant, $535,586 to Public Health for the Department of Health Housing and Essential Needs Grant, $250,000 expenditure of Department of Ecology grant extension for its Belfair Stormwater Grant, $1,200 to the assessor's office for donated revenue. Budget transfers, $80,000 transfer from the Mental Health Tax Fund 164 to Public Defender's Office, $323,877 transfer from General Fund Ending Fund Balance 2, $50,000 to Public Defender's Office Department 001.240, $18,877 to District Court Department 001.100, $200,000 to non-departmental accrued leave line 001.300.200, $50,000 to non-departmental for mailer cost 001.300, $10,000 to the assessor for accrual to cash adjustment for payroll 001.020. A $16,831 transfer from REIT 1 Ending Fund Balance 2, $10,000 to the Veterans Assistant Fund, Fund 190, $6,831 to the Historic Preservation Fund, that's Fund 116. $100,000 transfer from the REIT 2 Stormwater Drain, Fund 3551, $80,000 to the Belfair Wastewater, Fund 413, and $20,000 to REIT 2 Ending Fund Balance, Fund 351. 8.7, approval of the resolution establishing budget reserves and a contingency plan for Mason County. Item 8.88, approval of the following lodging tax awards. 2018 Visitor Information Center services, $57,400 to the Shelton Chamber of Commerce, and $33,500 to the North Mason Chamber of Commerce. For 2018 and 2019 tourism promotion and marketing services, $206,000 to Northwest Event Organizers Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, item number 8.9 reads, approval... Mr. Chairman, item number 8.9 reads, approval of amendments 15 to Mason County Public Health Consolidated Contract Number C17118 and approval to allow the department director the authority to sign the amended, the amendment to expedite immediate cash flow. Item number 8.10, approval to purchase the Unitrans Backup Computer System 818, including a three-year maintenance agreement and upgrades, purchase of an external HP Store Ever tape drive and 14 new LTO tapes for long-term retention of data, and purchase of a three-year optional pledge for the reduced pricing of a new, larger backup system in the fourth year. This entire purchase will be made on government bid from CDW-G. Item number 8.11, approval of the Mason County Sheriff's Office proposed civil fee schedule increases. Item number 8.12, approval to have the chair sign the 2017 through 2019 Department of Ecology Community Litter Cleanup Grant Agreement Number W2RCLCP-1719-MACOSO-00032 in the amount of $46,100. Item number 8.13, approval of warrants, Claims Corning Fund Warrants Number 8051216 through 8051229 for the amount $13,182.54. MaceCon, $106,841.84. Mental Health, $735.94. Mental Health budgeted transfer, $10,201.15 to Prosecutor, $10,201.15 also. Mental Health budgeted transfer of $11,157.2, same for juvenile probation, $11,157.2. Mental Health budgeted transfer, $46,053.35. And therapeutic court transfer, $46,053.35. I have, current expense, $5,863 even. Trial court improvement, $8,000, or $5,863 even again, for a total of $267,296.76.
Very good, thank you. We haven't had a, we haven't had a list that long in quite some time. I would ask that item 8.7 be removed at this time. It was brought to my attention prior to the meeting that the Finance Committee would like to take another look at that language, at that resolution before the board votes on it. So I'd like to table that until, I believe the Finance Committee is meeting October 17.
If you'd like, after we do the, the motion for the other, I will bring it up and ask for team one to take.
Okay. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, if you don't, would you allow a quick question on item 8.6 even though it will be discussed separately? It's just a clarification.
Sure.
Thank you. On item 8.6, for the, the transfer to the Veterans Assistance Fund from REIT, the package states that this supplement also asks for authority to spend the $10,000 towards veterans' assistance. Am I to assume that that will be directly deposited into the interest account then for veterans' assistance for immediate distribution or would we need another process?
No, it won't. Excuse me. It won't be added to the interest account. What it will do is authorize a budget supplement to increase the authority for the veterans to spend the $10,000 so that as you are going to spend it, you can move it into the interest account as needed.
Okay.
So it, it won't go into the interest account unless the veterans asks for it to go there.
We won't need another supplemental here.
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure.
Do I have to come up there? I thought the REIT funds were only for capital improvements. So if we're just gonna have people, veterans, as needed and that's not really a capital improvement.
If I may, last year there was a transfer out of the Veterans Fund into the Memorial Hall repairs and capital improvements. That was incorrect, that this is now being corrected.
Okay.
And so the REIT funds that should have been used or could have been last year are now going to be used this year. Okay? Thank you.
Good chat.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the action agenda as presented with the exception of item 8.7, which will be removed for a separate vote.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's action agenda with the exception of item 8.7, which will be removed for a separate vote. All, any discussion on the items?
I just want to acknowledge and thank the Lodging Tax Advisor Committee for their work in submitting the recommendations and under item 8.8 for the 2017, 2018, and in some case, 2019 expenditures of lodging tax awards. And should this get a favorable vote, congratulations and thank you to Northwest Event Organizers for, look forward to working with you.
Mr. Chairman, in the risk of sounding too local, when it comes to the, the money that will be expended for that very same thing, I'd just say welcome home.
I also want to thank the Sheriff's Office for coming forward with the, the review of the civil fee schedule. It was lacking and very much behind our comparable counties and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to update those.
And the money that we are getting for the Department of Ecology grant is funding our, we can fund our alternative program and we've got the most amount that they have available for us and I've always gotten an amendment and money from the other entities that haven't used it, so.
Okay, any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, with your approval, I'd like to make a motion to table the approval of the resolution establishing budget reserves and contingency policy for Mason County until what date was on?
So if the Finance Committee is meeting on the 17th, I think the next meeting would be the 24th.
So I included my motion to table until the meeting of the 24th.
Okay, we have a...
I, okay. Okay, and I, I would second that. I just want to thank that there, there might be an opportunity, there might be a need to have further discussion, but we'll have that briefing time in between, so.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table item 8.7 until October 24th. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, other business. It's an opportunity for department heads to come forward, and electeds to address the commission.
Dave has an input.
Yeah? Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. It's a news release, Building 8, one-day closure on October 4th, 2017. Mason County Community Services Department located in Building 8 at 615 West Alder Street and 415, which is downstairs, North Sixth Street, will be closed for business October 4th, 2017. The department's biennial all-staff training will be conducted at the County Works Building. These trainings are essential for meeting local, state, and federal standards. On-site business operations for the Community Services Department consisting of environmental health, community health, bio statistics, fire marshal, planning, building, and permit assistance center will return on October 5th, 2017.
Mr. Wonder, I want to say for those of the people out, out in this world that sometimes it is a good idea to slow down to be able to take care of these things and get that training. I think you've been very successful with everything you've been doing on this so far. When I used to coach, there was a state, there was a old saying, "Slow is fast." This is one of those things, by taking the time to do it right and train and getting to speed, up speed a lot quicker, you're doing a great job.
Thanks.
Any other department heads or electeds?
Good evening. I did want to let you know that we picked up 146,000 pounds of garbage. We cleaned up 266 illegal dump sites and 1,166 miles and recycled 1,900. So we'll continue to expand. I did get the last two years, $114,000 grant, including a new vehicle to start a second crew. So trying to keep the county clean is a never-ending job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to item number 10, which is our public hearings. We will take the new item 10.1 first, a public hearing to approve the sale of real property located in 2169 and 2179 Lake Boulevard in Shelton. Parcel numbers 32030-51-07010 and 32030-51-10001, the amount of $39,000 and I ask staff to come forward and brief.
First, I wanted to thank the commission for moving that up because after consideration at the Treasurer's Office in regards to researching titles, it has been determined that one of those parcels are tax-free title to the county and we cannot sell it in the process that we're currently looking to transfer. We're going to have to delay the process until we are, until we have the process for tax title sale addressed. In other words, we have to do it through a bid process rather than through a sale. So because of the tax title, we have to cancel the sale today.
Explain that in another way.
One of the parcels is tax title fee to the county. We took it over for taxes not being paid and it was done in 1938. So the property wasn't properly marked in our asset system. It was marked as surplus and ready to be sold, in which case we can't because we found out that it is tax titled. And so we have to do the transfer in a different process, through a different process. And the idea of when? It'll take about 30 to 45 days. The brokers have been notified. We're awaiting the purchaser to make a determination as to what he wants or what they want to do.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, because it's an ongoing offer, may I recommend that instead of voting this down or cancel it, that instead we table it for 45 days or 60 days would probably be smarter. I would recommend 60 days just to be on the safe side. And this way we can make the decision at that time and it may, it may make its own decision because the person making the offer may withdraw.
But didn't you say a different process needed to occur?
Yes, there's, it's, it has to be put through a closed bid process.
So we can't even...
And auctioned off. So we couldn't sell it then anyway? In this process, no, we couldn't sell it. On this one, what would make the difference if there was no motion made at all? Because there's no action that's... There would be no action. Yeah. Maybe we just don't make a motion, continue on and this way it will not have been rejected and try and work out something with that person that's still interested in purchasing it or not.
If it's improperly being offered for sale, I think we dispense with the hearing altogether.
Well, you still would, you just, there'd be nothing.
But we're entering into a process, whether there's a motion made or not, we're entering into a process that's not authorized by law.
That is correct. If we don't make a motion, we're turning into a process? If we, if we make a motion.
If we have a hearing.
We already had the hearing. We're in the process of having the hearing. Yeah. And if we allow the hearing to expire without a motion and readdress the two parcels separately, if the purchaser is still interested in it, then we would address them both separately. One with a hearing to sell in 60 days and another at the results, as the results of an auction. We can vote it out, it just never makes sense to make a motion for the negative. It's just one of those simple rules, but however you want to do it, if you're uncomfortable with that.
And so you're proposing that we vote down?
I propose we do nothing and it'll automatically goes away because...
Okay, okay.
Dyce pays me for the lack of emotion.
Dyce because of a lack of emotion, exactly.
So take public comment?
No. Just let it, yeah.
So just move on.
Move on, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thanks, thank you. Okay, that moves us to item number 10.2, public hearing continued from September 12th, 2017, to execute the resolution approving the change of control transaction for the WAVE franchise agreement. And, Loretta, seems like you're ready.
Ready. Good evening, Commissioners. As you mentioned, Commissioner, this is a continuation from a hearing that was held on September 12th and we are asking the board to execute a resolution approving the change of control transaction for the WAVE franchise agreement. During the September 12th hearing, there were some questions and issues raised by Commissioner Netherland that he requested a couple of weeks to be addressed or work with WAVE to address. And to my understanding, WAVE has been responsive to that request and I believe we are ready to recommend approval of the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I, should we reopen the public comment period?
Commissioner Jeffries made sure that that was allowed on the last one, so we have to follow.
Right. Yes, we did.
So at this point, I'll reopen the public comment period on item number 10.2. If there are any members of the public that would like to make comment on this, please come forward at this time and Chair will recognize you. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion and move to Commissioner Discussion and...
If I may, I've been able to get ahold of almost everybody that we were talking to. There was calls that came in, there was calls of thank you and stuff. We need to take this time, I need to take this time to give a very special thank you and express my appreciation to WAVE and, what's the name of the new company? That, what's it?
Radiate.
Radiate Holdings. Not only were they responsive, they were responsive in a way I hadn't seen since I've ever been a Commissioner. I got phone calls, if not the next day, the very next day after that, from constituents in those communities telling me that WAVE Media was knocking on their door, trying to figure out ways to help them and to get past some of the issues that they had. I have received a, a email from WAVE Media basically outlining everything that we went over, everything, and trying to put a resolution to every single aspect that, that came up. It was extremely impressive. One of the things that's really exciting is those people that live out there in Tuhuya and now they're even talking Aaron's, Aaron's Lake and always talking Collins Lake and that area. They have full intentions now, they've already, they're doing a, a cost survey of it, but they have intentions of actually including into their, their budget for 2018 construction. Now, there's no guarantees that it passes, of course, but they all, they do believe that, that it costs out and they, in talking to the person that was here the last time, he fully believes this is going to end up being built and done. And they're very proud of, of the work that they did and I agree with them. I want to point out that those people have been waiting a long time and everybody I've talked to is so excited and so happy. They're so happy to have WAVE because people may not understand, but the communication system that they have out there currently, they don't even have enough line left to have an additional phone connected in the community. In order to get a phone into Huy River Valley on CenturyLink, somebody has to come off of the line. That's how bad it is out there. This will give them the opportunity, not just to have TV, but to have internet and to have phone lines so that they can start to build out there and also rent their, their, their places, their, their homes and stuff. I get calls that they can't rent their home because they can't get a phone line. Now they'll be able to get a phone line when, when WAVE is done and I truly believe that their customer service and the way they have done business has been extraordinary. So I want to give an extra special thank you to WAVE for stepping way outside the box, going out there and knocking on the doors the next day or the day after that and just getting all this done so quick in a two-week period. I could never have asked for more and I'm proud that you guys are up in my area. And now that I've said all that, I've got one more here I want to talk to you about after we're done. after we're done.
Okay. Any other comment? I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we execute the resolution approving the change of control transaction for the WAVE franchise agreement.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to execute the resolution approving the change of control transaction for the WAVE franchise agreement. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you, WAVE.
Takes us to item 10.3, a public hearing to approve and execute the ordinance revising Mason County Code Title VI, Chapter 6.72, Section 6.72.010B, authority and purpose to reflect current review process, state and federal regulations, and the comprehensive solid waste management plan. Let's invite staff forward to brief.
Commissioner, public, Bart Stepp, TPE Director. We recently completed a draft of the solid waste management plan, and that's been submitted to Ecology, and a few weeks ago, we actually had another public hearing on the plan itself. As part of the SWAC completing that plan, we, they did a review of the Mason County Code and kind of looked to see if any changes in the code were needed to kind of match up with what we were proposing in the plan. And this is the hearing for that. There was one section we felt, they felt needed some changes, Mason County Code 6.72.010, Paragraph B. One change was to change the name of the Health Department to the Community Services Department, Environmental Health Division, which is the current name of the permitting authority. And then the last sentence, additionally, the Mason County Community Services Department, Environmental Health Division shall evaluate, make determination that permit applications conform to the approved comprehensive solid waste management plan per the WAC. And that sentence was kind of added because SWAC didn't feel there was good clarity in terms of that Environmental Health Department was the permitting authority, and they had to follow the solid waste management plan. So mainly just kind of a clarification there to understand who's, who's doing the permitting and where their authority comes from.
Very good. Any questions for staff? Any questions? Okay, at this time, I will open the public comment period on item 10.3. If you'd like to make comment on this item, please come forward, say your name, and the Chair will recognize you. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment portion, and I would entertain Commissioner Discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the Board of County Commissioners approve and execute the ordinance revising Mason County Code Title VI, Chapter 6.72, Section 6.72.010B, Subsection B, authority and purpose to reflect current review process and state and federal regulations and the comprehensive solid waste management plan.
I'll second.
The movement seconded to approve and execute the ordinance revising Mason County Code Title VI, Chapter 6.72, Section 6.72.010B, authority and purpose to reflect current review process and state and federal regulations in the comprehensive solid waste management plan. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. And we move on to item... Yeah, thank you. Move on to item 11, our board reports and calendar. I will lead us off. Commissioner Netherland, if you could go second, and then we will finish with Commissioner Drexler. Just a couple of items from last week. I had an opportunity to meet with some of the folks at Tacoma Power to talk about their projects out of the Cushman area and some of their plans to work collaboratively with not only the county, but also the state or the, the Federal Park Service and Forest Service, get an update on some of those efforts. Also joined the Shelton-Mason County Chamber last week for a presentation on the state of the county. We got to hear from representatives from the City of Shelton, Squawson Island Tribe, and the Port of Shelton as well. Very well attended. Met to talk with our auditor, treasurer, and assessor last week about some of their budget concerns, as well as had a productive meeting with the Hood Canal Coordinating Council. The meeting was held at the Skokomish Tribe's new community center out on 101, just a beautiful building that they've recently completed there. Just send my congratulations to the Skokomish on, on a job really well done on that building. It's a fantastic addition to our community. Going forward, this week, we have some budget workshops. We'll get that process underway. Be meeting tomorrow as well with Pierce County Councilman Derek Young. Following that, a meeting with the Alliance for a Healthy South Sound. Also have a joint Planning Commission meeting tomorrow evening, which we're looking forward to, given the, given the proclamation from earlier today. Also have Shelton Rotary, meeting with Kathy Haig again on some housing authority concerns that she has. Sheriff's Breakfast, and then afterwards on Friday. I'll be stopping by Truman Glick Park out in the Matlock area with our, our hosts, our park hosts there, Bernie Games, every year hosts park staff, does a thank you for all of their work. And he's, so he's having his staff appreciation picnic on Friday afternoon, so I stop out there. I heard he makes some pretty good ribs, so be looking forward to that. And then that afternoon, on the way back, I'll be meeting with Superintendent Sean Batstone and Marty Brewer from Pioneer School District, and Sean from Hood Canal School to talk about some of the issues that they're facing, as well as looking ahead to a potential new high school in our area. And then back Monday for briefings, and our meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, aside from that, we also had the executive session after the last commission meeting. I also attended the, the meeting of the elected officials. I met with developers again in North Mason. There's so many things that are happening right now or on the verge of. I can't wait to tell most of it, or more of it, but I have to go at their pace. North Mason Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, EDC had a meeting out here in regards to the USDA and all the different things they have to offer when it comes to loans and financing. I attended another meeting with some constituents in the Allen area in regards to the values in their homes and, and how they've been trying to get some of these things changed and the problem that they're facing that it'll keep coming back year after year, even when they've appealed it and have won the appeal. The Allen-Belfair Cooperation Cooperative Group, we also met this last week. I met again with a developer in regards of a person looking to purchase property that will be starting several new businesses at the same time. If this comes through, it'll be an additional 14 jobs up in Belfair. Funeral for Mr. Archambault, we had our, our briefings, met with the North Mason Fire Chief, and we had our Board of Health meeting today as well. North Mason Chamber of Commerce Lunch is on Wednesday. We have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission coming up. Also Wednesday, then, there's an event, if you remember, we had that group of people that were getting all the training for their new businesses, their event, just reminding you guys, is happening next to Sisters at that little shop, the Tees and stuff like that they have.
Oh, by your moon.
Yeah, that is happening this week also, in case you guys are gonna be there. I plan to drop in there.
What's the date?
Date on that one is...
That's fine, I can, I can follow up later.
Okay. It is the 30th, Saturday, the 30th, 11 o'clock. That's what I have in my phone. Then I also have a, a meeting with Spencer Pruitt, a brilliant young man. He's the one that runs and puts everything together. He's still in high school, he puts everything together up in North Mason for the Relay for Life. He's also the representative on the school board, so I'm not sure what he wants to meet on, but I will meet with him in regards to one of those two. I have a Memorial Hall meeting, we have our briefings coming up again, Port Allen meeting, our budget workshop, and the Left Board meeting. That brings us back to our regular meeting.
Thank you.
So last week, following our, our regular meeting, I did also attend the elected officials' directors' meeting, Budget, had a meeting of the Mason Transit Authority that Wednesday, had two meetings with constituents, and then traveled for the rest of the week to Eastern Washington. First, the Transportation Improvement Board. Did want to encourage folks to take a look at a website called WAroadusagecharge.org. Those of those, those of us that follow transportation issues for the last few years know that this issue, this process called vehicle miles traveled as a way of paying for our roads instead of the gas tax, because the declining revenues from the gas tax is starting to come up to a more real possibility, especially now that we have electric cars. And the Transportation Commission, the State Transportation Commission will be doing a pilot study, and they are looking for 2,000 volunteers to go through a year of using one of four of the methods of tracking your vehicle miles traveled. And they are very interested in getting volunteers who are skeptical of this type of, of, of way of funding our transportation needs. So I know us in the rural community's been very concerned about using this new process because we tend to travel more miles than our folks in the cities, and don't know if there'll be a way to correct for that, but I think this is an opportunity for, for folks that want to see what this might look like to participate. So go to WArod, excuse me, WAroadusagecharge.org. Also had a meeting of the Washington State Association of Counties Board of Directors. We had briefings on Monday, followed by an Oyster Board meeting. Oyster Fest is on its way, folks, next weekend, and we are looking for some volunteers. There's some really fun jobs still available, so go on to the Oyster Fest website and sign up to be a volunteer. Had another meetings with constituents, we had our Board of Health meeting, and then tomorrow, we'll have the joint meeting with the Planning Advisory Committee. And then I will be attending the Thurston Economic Development Council's Commercial Real Estate Forum on Thursday, and then Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging. And then I'll be joining staff of a number of mental health and behavioral health providers to meet with Mason General Hospital about some of our behavioral health programs that have been launched or will be being launched, and looking for some partnerships from Mason General Hospital. And then we'll be back here on Monday for briefings.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That moves us to item number 12.
Mr. Chair, we adjourn.
I'll second.
We adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.